Glad you were with us tonight. We will call this meeting to order. This meeting is a regularly scheduled meeting, and the notice of the time, place, and agenda of the meeting has been provided to the local news media, to each member of the governing body, and was posted on the city webpage and the state public news webpage. To begin, we'll do a roll call, and then we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wade, and then we'll give it all, follow me in, the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Laybroom here. Councilman White here. Councilman Baird here. Councilman Wade here. And Councilman Burdick here.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather this night. City Council, Mother, we're grateful for the wonderful city we have and the community we live in, for the great people who are here that serve all around us and that are faithful to one another. We're grateful for those who serve in our forces, in our police force, in our fire department, and serve diligently to protect us in that capacity. We're also grateful for those who keep the utilities on so that we have those benefits and luxuries in our lives. We're grateful for these blessings. We also are grateful for the opportunity we have to participate in democracy. We're grateful for the freedoms of our country. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to make decisions that are in our best judgment for the benefit of our community. We would invite thy influence and spirit to help us in those decision-making processes this evening. We give thanks for these things and ask thy blessings to be with us and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a note, there is a role being taken as it goes around, if you mind signing that and making sure your history name on there. Go ahead and look at the past minutes from our previous council. Are there any corrections or amendments to page one? Page two? And page three? Seeing none, we entertain a motion to approve. So we move here. Second, motion by Councilman Wade and second by Councilman Laybroom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item. Very briefly, we have a comment period at the beginning that each of our meetings, any individual can take up three minutes to address the council. And we ask that you keep your comments, two, three minutes, and remind you that the council, it's not a discussion, it's just for you to comment and give comment to the council. Always, would anybody like to take opportunity tonight and do that? Seeing none, we'll move forward to our public hearings. We only have a couple. First of all, is the conditional use permit for everybody's rescue. I see that they're here today. Would you, Melissa, do you, would you like to come and address the council on what you're planning on doing and kind of give us a little background? We'll have our city manager chime in as well. And then, once we get an idea of that, then we'll open up the public hearings. Go ahead and say your name.
Melissa's here, and I'm the founder of everybody's and also manage the animal shelter also. It's just getting to the point where we're getting a lot of animals and want them to go quickly and kind of separate, not necessarily separate because it is kind of one, but have it so the shelter can be the shelter and the rescue can be the rescue. I don't know. I would like, I guess, asking questions.
One thing, just so I have an idea why it comes as a conditional use. The location she found is a luxury location which she's at, that little shop. But the zoning out there, this is one that doesn't have a permitted, permitted but conditional or prohibited, so it really kind of fits kind of the judgment call of the council. In our ordinance, we've hit exactly certain ones specifically. It's gone through finding zoning. Finding zoning reviewed the idea, reviewed it and approved it. And they, as well as the staff recommend this. We believe this is a fit to work. And so, we're comfortable that this would fit out there. So, anyway, that's kind of why it comes is because in our current ordinance, and we'd recommend some point down the road in order to help clarify those lists instead of having defined veterinary. It's a very, very defined list. But that's really not the only businesses that we pop up. So, anyway, it kind of fits the intent, but not the actual letter. And that's what's being referred to the council.
So, thank you. One comment that I would make really quickly is, one, I've seen what you do down there, and you do a great service for our community. And we really, really appreciate all the hard work that you put into that. And I know that your goal is to make sure that we're a no-kill shelter, which means that you do need space to house the animals while you're waiting and getting them help for adoption and those types of things. And so, I just really appreciate the service that you provide for our community and the way that you do that. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and consider ourselves in an open, our public hearing. And we would allow anyone in the audience to make comment. One thing with as many as we have tonight, we want to keep this as organized as we possibly can. So, what we'd ask is those that would like to speak, come to the podium and state your name and address. Those that are for it, we'll allow first. And those that are against it, we'll allow next. We'll try to keep that as organized as possible. So, we go ahead and invite you to sit down, and we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing and invite public comment if there are any. Seeing none, we entertain a motion. Oh, yes, we'll consider ourselves back in a regular meeting, and then we'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make the motion. I don't see any reason why we approve the conditional use permit.
We have a motion to approve the conditional use permit by Councilman Aaron Wade and a second by Councilman White. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have our McBride's here.
Yeah. Thank you, Melissa. For what you're doing.
I'm just trying to put up a building. I'm just going to color them. I just sort of draw, just to put stuff in. I know nobody wants an eyesore, I understand that. I'm going to try to color them out so that they can come home with what they have to offer from the factory, the engineers. That's all I'm here for.
I think you provided plans as well, right? I saw it in the packet.
Yeah, there was some plans, however.
It was a brochure? Idea of what you were looking at. Okay.
Oh.
Great.
And this has gone through finding zoning. We've had a public hearing there. It has been accepted there and passed on and recommended by both staff that finding zoning is approved.
Remind the address.
Eighteen West Two Hundred and over. Like, off and offs and all the way back to No Place. Not going to be real big, you know, just something to park stuff in.
Any questions or comments from the council further? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and let you sit down. And we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing at this point. Are there any that are for or against? We'll vote for first. And against? Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back in a regular meeting and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Matt? Were there any concerns in the finding zoning?
Yes.
Have you talked to neighbors too?
I have, yes. And so, they're all okay. They're all aware of what you're doing.
Is it Larry? Yeah, across. He was here, and he was a human of water for both probably four. Just trying to clean the yard up, you know, and where you can park stuff in.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Laybroom. I'll approve it. Saying by Councilman Burdick, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have the ones I saw in the back. Would you come forward and walk?
Robert Holden. Basically, I'm in the same boat as he as I've got a pit well and above that I'm just trying to keep down. I've got a building and the finding zoning has already checked everything out and said, you're good, just these steps that you got to go through. Sorry for the hooch sometimes.
Same thing, finding zoning did. I have a public hearing, and I didn't know it before, but on their public hearing, they send out letters to everybody within three hundred feet of the property. And so, we try to encourage that if there is any. But there wasn't any opposition to it there. Finding zoning approved it and recommended for your approval as well as the staff.
Any questions or comments for the council?
I just comment that about a year ago, or just when I barely came on city council, because we haven't followed a lot of things. There was a lot of challenges about buildings being built and what they look like and everything. So, I'm thankful for the process that gives everybody a chance to. And I'm thankful the city is making all the effort they can to neighbor.
Read your address again.
Twenty-three North Six Hundred East.
Six Hundred East.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll invite you to. I don't think you, Robert. We'll consider ourselves in a public hearing. And are there any that would like to comment? For or against? Yes.
I don't see any reason. I support him completely. Right across the street. Thanks for the letter, by the way.
All right. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back in a regular meeting and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make my motion to approve.
Okay. I'll second. Motion by Councilman Burdick and second by Councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion passes unanimously. Moving through pretty quick, this is good. Ordinance two thousand nineteen fourteen five. This was brought before our city staff and city attorney do this in.
We had the chief here.
Yeah. You know, I thought you might come here already. Would you mind when we're on? The ordinance. So, this is, this is, maybe this past time was riding on the same portions of the vehicle.
We've had several incidents this year, which is more than in the past years of kids, particularly at the school, but also in other areas of town, if it's parks and so forth, riding on offenders and vehicles. Some have been hurt, certainly substantially falling off. There isn't a good state code that covers that, so we'd like a city ordinance that addresses that and maybe, I know there are kids and they're doing their kids' things, but maybe we could get their attention a little bit anyway, for the air, too severely.
I have a question on that. How do you handle the situations now if somebody's doing something like that and hurt or an accident occurs? What, how's it handled legally? Or is there illegal action or just?
There is, and we, it depends on what the driver does. In some instances, if the driver was driving recklessly or cornering around, we would charge the driver. However, in some of these incidents, that may have been the case, but the kid on the back was doing about the same thing, you know. They were pulling it off and did and things like that. We just kind of hope that we can get something that'll get their attention before they get hurt. It's not a huge problem, but for whatever reason this year we've had maybe five where they don't have, somebody's had to go off though.
So, the intent of this, I guess, to give the jurisdiction the ability to ticket somebody who is not the driver?
Yes.
Yeah. In adult cases, if there's an adult involved, or one of the same age is different. If there's an adult involved, the dealer driving, there's not any problem ticketing the adult for that. They're responsible. But when you have two sixteen-year-olds, like, sometimes they're both, they're irresponsible.
So, I think in the ordinance, it says that we'll now be charged as a Class B misdemeanor. Is that right?
Yes.
How is that, what does that entail? Or what?
Class B is pretty much the catch-all for misdemeanor. It does possibly entail up to six months jail time. However, we're talking juvenile, so that doesn't apply. In most cases, it's applied everybody, so. And a fine of up to a thousand.
Whereas now, is there just not really?
There's not a state ordinance that's riding in the back of a vehicle and things like that, or reckless, but reckless is a Class A, fairly severe. So, we're hoping to get something that wasn't as severe and yet maybe gets their attention.
Put it out in a fraction.
We could do that. Fraction entails no jail time, only fine. That's certainly an option if you chose to do that. We would be fine with that.
That's what I thought. Sometimes, dads take their kids for riding back in the truck. Used to be more common than it is nowadays, but is that, I just have a tough time. Policing them can be tough sometimes, I guess.
One of the things we did, we met with the city, I met with the city manager and city attorney today because I had some concerns also with, and saw some of the comments and heard some of the comments around town. And do you want to explain what we came up with?
We came up with, you know, especially addressing the school areas, and that's really a very sensitive one. But Title X, Chapter Four, oh, four references specifically in students in a school district, off school district property. If we do it there, that creates, it's not necessarily the little one outside of town, right in the back. But it does specifically do, if we're looking and saying, hey, we don't want to have ramifications for everyone, to be all over the city, that would isolate it. So, that's an option, to be able to look at that one. So, anyway, there's a few possibilities we could look at. And I think we're just looking to say, hey, how do we, how do we help some enforcement where our kids doing stupid things and help them to move there?
And I can see where it's difficult for a police officer who enforces the laws and ordinances of the state and the city to, you know, when he's on school property, not to be able to enforce some type of, even a school policy might seem different.
The key that this comes in, in the Title X, is that on school property, when schools are under, when the kids are under the school's jurisdiction, we are not anymore allowed to enforce less than a Class B unless the school gives it to us. Unless the school says, we want you to enforce that. So, it has to be a Class B if it's a school property.
Now, are you saying if the school says, we want you to take care of this, then you can?
Only if it's Class B or above. Anything in infraction or Class C, this changed a couple of years ago by the state. If it's Class C or below, or an infraction, the school has to handle it within in-house. If it's a B or above, the school has the option of handling it or giving it to us.
Okay.
At least that's what we put it in the study.
I like to be really careful about, you know, passing ordinance or some research to be paid for. I understand what you're facing. I hesitate for it to be citywide. And so, I, you know, have some concerns over some, you know, teenagers acting recklessly. I think everyone. As I've been thinking about this, and of course, I came out, you know, pretty well against it just because of a few incidences, but could we have adjusted in some wording to say something that, you know, that ride in vehicle, or they can't ride in the vehicle other than with a seatbelt? Or safely in the back of a truck under the supervision of an adult traveling short distances under thirty-five miles an hour? We might could. Or if we leave it a B and, this would be a thought. We leave it a B, but put it under the school code. It would eliminate anyone outside the school, which is going to be getting home anyway.
And I like that because it's hard to, once we start putting more and more detail into, in that, you know, fitting that in there, it kind of covers up, you know, what we're trying to do.
And we hate the big, this is like all that you have, Councilman, but other situations. Because this is, we're just aiming at this for sure.
It wouldn't necessarily address the parks, but it would take care of the school. And I think that probably.
Probably get the word out anyway.
Well, and I appreciate what you're part of. I was like, well, this department has got to be one of the greatest departments in the state. Your officers are very professional and handle things very well. And generally, people along North us are acting unsafe or, you know, breaking the law. What, you know, it's too bad. And it's nice to have meetings where you obviously see people acting stupid and reckless, childish in a dangerous manner. It's hard for you to do anything about it. That sounds like maybe your situation. But I appreciate you doing it to the school.
Probably none of us in this room have ever done such a thing as.
I was about to say, or.
With the pavement down there, it's so enticing. I mean, holy cow. Was it happening like winter time with figure eights and things like that? Did that have any?
No.
Or just whenever they wanted?
They kept messing around and one jumps in the back and tap on and they pick up and fly off, you know.
So, what I'm hearing is leaning towards having the ordinance, but having it specific in Title X, that would put it right underneath the school and that. You would have a majority over this whole.
That'd be perfect.
All right. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll not come for a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public in regards to the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back in a regular session and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. We pass it under the Title X statute.
Okay. The motion made by Councilman Burdick and again, to make sure that it falls under Title X and only affects this school property. We have a second by Councilman Laybroom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're going to skip on, we're going to go out of order a little bit in loop time. First of all, back in January, I think was when we did our extra mile awards. Is that correct? And Dan and Polly Karen were not able to be there at the time, so it's really embarrassing tonight. I don't know if you knew that, but we're going to do it anyway. And so, and then we'll let you, we'll go to your property that you're looking at developing also. But just a quick thing, many of you know Dan and Polly and the good things that they've done in our community, but I wanted to just read a couple that stand out. There are no more valuable community volunteers than Dan and Polly Karen. Dan is a past president and founding member for the Roosevelt Rotary Club. He was the inspiration of the Enchanted Forest fundraiser and has been the driving force behind this fundraiser for the last eight years. That's a long time previous than that. And it's a huge success, by the way. During this time, the fundraiser has generated more than one point four million in funds generated for forty nonprofit organizations in Duchenne County. Another home run for Dan and Polly is the Unabased and Faith-Based Recovery Foundation, which is just getting off the ground. It's off the ground now, more, but Dan was the reason that this organization was able to purchase and remodel the Thompson School. Dan has also been a longtime supporter of the Conneymore School. Dan and Polly have been longtime supporters of the Conneymore School where their grandson goes to school. Several years ago, they personally raised over a hundred thousand for the school, which was used to enhance the school and the facilities. Polly has been a great supporter of the Villa Senior Center, where she worked and later served as a community member in charge of volunteer services. Both are excellent members of the community. So, thank you, Dan and Polly, for all of your hard work. Dan, there's a, coming up, there's the fundraiser in the park, is that this Saturday?
No, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, so twenty-eight. So, remember that, fundraiser for the, and that's for the faith-based rehab recovery center. Anyway, if you'd come forward, I have this award for you to present to you. We should have got two, but we put both your names on there.
We live together.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I get a picture of the three of you together?
You will.
All right, we're going to take two in a row so the bride and groom keeps smiling. Ready, one, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's come a long ways from that little tire shop in the bottom, all you can.
The recovery centers do fantastic.
Great.
You guys are doing really well.
While we're on that, we'll just jump right into, it says here, clarification of requirements to develop property at thirteen forty-seven West Highway Four. Dan, do you want to take a minute and speak to that?
Thank you, everybody, for letting us move up. She's got a school thing with the grandkids in a few minutes. She's been anxious, so we appreciate you letting us jump ahead here. Have you got that screen?
I don't know.
It's your snow again. But what we're, the property we have out there on Highway Forty, with the buildings we have, we're exploring the possibilities of dividing those buildings up and put them on separate lots. They're all just in one parcel right now. In 2010, we wanted to do the last two structures, and so Roger Escher, we got together, he wanted a fifty-foot right-of-way down through the buildings for future, before we could get the last two building permits that we acquired at that time. So, with time moving on and stuff, I kind of think it's maybe time for me to, still, if we could get those broken individual lots, I doubt that there's anyone coming behind me that's going to want to keep that in one piece. So, we're exploring what would be required to get that to the position where we could break those buildings up individually and sell them off if that ever came about.
Now, I read in the packet where the requirement is like sixty feet, and this is fifty feet or something like that.
At that time, Roger wanted a fifty-foot right-of-way through there, since then it's been moved to sixty-six feet.
Gotcha.
Mostly for utility easements. All the utilities are in, so there would be, as far as, I think Ryan has the, where the utilities are off. Now, I can point them out to you. But there's, the utilities are in. We put in a fifty-foot right-of-way down through the property with a one-hundred-foot cul-de-sac in the back. That's running like, you know, up Highway Forty
Is that, that's running like up Highway forty right back to the southeast.
On that, what is it like a normal width of pavement on a road?
So our standard is a sixty-six foot right-of-way and a forty-four foot asphalt. So we're looking at a forty-four foot, the rule would be curb gutter sidewalk. We're saying instead of curb gutter sidewalk, putting a little bit farther to asphalt and eliminating the concrete side. It was coming up and then it didn't, so. But.
So any industrial garden, what do we have going there?
So sixty-six foot wide, why it's the same height with, the asphalt's only forty there. And at this point, it is developed. So it's, it's a little different. We really expect, there's a lot of these buildings here, right, Dan? Coming down.
You got that screen the other, that we had the other night. It showed your, Gary Allred's flat map.
Hey, Dan, when you, I was, I just was on the city council when you did this. I can remember talking about that. The buildings that are back on the south, the ones, who was, who was that for when you built that?
Chevron Leno, Chevron Office, the other one is a diesel repair shop.
The one back behind where you get back, this one?
This is a diesel repair shop.
Okay.
And it's.
And that one here.
But there might be a chance that these might stay in a lot.
Too bad.
This one.
It is what it is.
So I think if you go. There is one lot or two lots.
Mayor, if I can, let's speak to that. Go ahead. I'm very familiar with the property. I've been down there with, with Dan a time or two. Also was involved, I think we put the power there years ago. I, I understand what's taking place there with the buildings that are there. It is a, it's already done. It's a cap facility, basically. It's grown out to what it's going to be. I would certainly recommend that we move forward and approve the asphalt, no curb and gutter sidewalk, not consistent with no curb and gutter sidewalk inserted for. In other development areas, but I'll move forward, puts on that plaque, means fifty feet of asphalt.
And anybody that's going to be buying or looking at that will know exactly what's happening there. It's not like we're coming in to change.
Yeah, I would agree. If it was a main thoroughfare or through street or something like that, but where it's isolated to those buildings alone, I don't see any issue either. The only thing I'm looking at, having been on the fire department, is just making sure that that's big enough turnaround for fire, or fire truck getting there. Be my own concern and all, but I think that's probably.
The radius of fifteen is over.
Yeah. I've looked at, but I'd say, my personal opinion is that we approve it.
The other part of that, too, you look up there on the, on the screen, to the right is the Dan's Tire building. To the left is the basin, used to be basin diesel, right?
Yes, building was bigger, that's why I kept them out.
That building there, does there need to get that?
We're interested right now, if we could just get one lot line adjustment and break that building off where the arrow is, we call that one lot while we're trying to work out the rest. But we would like to move the tire shop into that building and add a new office and showroom and one more bay on the head. We've, we've been in that same building now for forty-one years. It's time for, Junior says it's not good enough.
I'm telling you right now, the poll out there, I think I've hit it a couple of times. No, the other way, it's great, it's really.
Anyway, if the council could see to, to let us break that one building off. And then, you know, what I'm doing, I'm exploring what it's going to cost to put that right-of-way through there, whether it's even going to get done or not, you know. I'm just kind of in the stage of seeing how feasible it is. And if, if it's financially feasible, then we would probably go ahead and do it. If it's not, we can just leave it as is. But we would like to consider that this, do maybe just one or two lots with the building on the left being lot number one and all the rest of it being, being a designated lot until we can maybe figure out the rest of it. If that's not suitable, then we'll have.
So would the lot like to the west end, where would be the east border on here?
That would be determined by the offsets. It's pretty well determined for the offsets and if it's going to be a fifty-foot right-of-way or a sixty-six foot right-of-way, that, that, all the other lines are determined. That is the only unknown line and that would be determined by the offsets according to.
I know in the county, the center of the road normally is a property line. Would that?
One would have a. We don't, when we come, when we have a road, we have it become city property of the roads. When the city, we differ because people don't own to the center of the road. But same kind of idea. When the lot's split, they'll bring a mylar back to get it signed and draw all the stuff. But.
So I would guess that it would be, it would just follow the, the road contour, right?
That would be, it's pretty well to be, if wherever the offsets are required and stuff. Until, until we can make a decision where if we can break that building off, you know, then that lot would be established. But if that was established, we could already put it, then I could come back to city council again and get a final. No, it could be done before we can.
So yes.
Yeah, I think unless there's other further comment, I, I.
Issue with cyclo, which I kind of push a lot, was, you know, many of those pedestrians going back and forth. You know, it was close to the town, but that way industrial park.
See, Dan's done a great job out there developing that. We've done great, always kept nice.
I think we're, there's no further comment, ready for a motion.
A good damn motion there. I'd say.
Motion by Councilman Wayne and a second by Councilman Labor, all in favor. And opposed. Motion has some.
So what we wrote on is. If that approved. If law is approved by council at a later date, that could be a separate lot that will be for the rest.
Correct, and then I think we were talking about.
Splitting locks, you have to come with a.
That would be a separate thing. This was a fifty-five foot.
But they're not requiring a side curb gutter sidewalk.
And fifty-five.
Fifty, so the asphalt, sixty-six five foot, only fifty in the asphalt. Yeah, I think that's what we're talking.
Let's, let's.
Okay, let's.
Let me clarify, I just want to make sure that, now we, we will asphalt from that building to Highway forty and over to the existing asphalt in front of Dan's Tire. But that wouldn't be a commitment to do the whole road if we break off the one building.
If you're only breaking off the one, you just have to develop from property line, property line where you're breaking off. That's what we would require, so.
So they'll back up and make sure that this is very clear on the motion.
Let me, let me. And my, my motion was knowing that this was future, that we would have the lot one and the street would be there as well. Because right now, we're looking at plunder, right? That's what you said, you're exploring the option of the opportunity to see what.
I just don't want her, Councilman, I don't want her to be a misunderstanding that if we, if we develop two lots now, the building, the basin diesel building and the other building stay as one, that, that breaking off of the one building is not a commitment for the road, yeah?
Right.
Okay, but if there's any other further building going to the east-west, east, south or east, if there are any more broke off, then the road would be required.
Yes, and that's what you stated, that we would.
We're on that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Will you make sure that that's in the. So I guess that's a comeback.
Thank you.
Once he has a plaque, he'll have to come back to approve it.
Correct, the lot's split.
You're right. Unfortunately, I'm a lot split when it's official and you have the mylar.
Thank you.
I'll take you. Okay. We're on to E, ordinance twenty nineteen four twenty-six, revised alcohol licenses. Do you want to let us know what you're doing there?
Yep.
Right.
Don't you want to take alcohol?
Sure. You want to take alcohol, go ahead.
All right. So we've, stat, we've done some research with the, I'm going to read it. The Division of Alcohol Beverage Control and worked with them to make sure that what we have in our ordinances is consistent with what, what they have. And this basically is to try to make sure that what they have is consistent with what we have. That's going through and also you'll notice on one of the other appointments, it's a resolution on rates or the, some of the adjustments in the resolution. It's the same thing, it's to, it's to make our code consistent with what that department has. So that's in that show.
Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go ahead and consider ourselves in a public hearing. Is there any comments? So this is bringing our code up to state code as it pertains to alcohol use and fees as well. Are there any comments from the public on that? Seeing that we'll consider ourselves back into regular meeting and would entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
We approve it. Second, a motion by Councilman Labor and a second by Councilman Wayne, all in favor. And opposed? Motion passes. Uh, ordinance twenty nineteen four twenty-seven, this is similar, I think, amending our ordinances to match that of state.
It is, it is, we already have an ordinance that addresses PSO, certainly from a PSO that already state code and they have more defined and more strict requirements than we do. So there's nothing that would be enforcement ours, so we might as well remove it. The other one is, the other part of that is the driving range inside the golf courses. It said golf course agreement, he doesn't, he doesn't own and manage the, the driving range. So he does, that's just speeding up the code. He brought that one up and said, hey, this is outside of our agreement, so he can change. So those are pretty minor ones. So we're asking just to clear that.
All right, are there any questions from the council or comments? Seeing that we would move into a public hearing and would invite, if there are any public comments pertaining to that ordinance, I would invite anyone wanting to comment at this time. Seeing that, we'll consider ourselves back into regular session and would entertain a motion to approve.
Sure.
Have a motion by Councilman Wayne and a second by Councilman Wayne, all in favor. And opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance twenty nineteen four twenty-eight, it's the airport overlay district language, the land use compatibility of Roosevelt Power Ports. This has to do with heights of building, traffic patterns, those types of things to keep our airspace safe around our airport.
That's, that's exactly what it is. We worked with our engineer and on this one, to be able to identify where that traffic pattern is, because we're increasing and improving the airport in a number of ways. So this talks about height. So anyway, it has gone through planning zoning. We went through it twice there in order to make sure that all things got worked out. But it is ready. The DFA has similar requirements that are already. And so this kind of solidifies that and also helps to protect that airspace. So as things get built, we can monitor that and say, hey, you can't have a five-story building on the approach space because we don't want the plane to hit it. We have offset there, it just solidifies that. So. This is kind of what it looks like. It's nice and fancy, different colors represent different heights and different areas. So it works like an added zoning. So we get it here, if you'll approve it, then we take it to the county and have them match that same amount. So whether it's planning zoning in the county or the city, we will consist.
I appreciate the foresight in that, too. I mean, who knows when we're going to have some high-rise buildings, but it could happen.
If they plan to build a five-story high building, we also need a fire hydrant for that, or fire, uh, job for that. So if they, if they do that, we'll need another fire.
I have a question. On page five, under premise A, number four. An area is lying within the limits of the approach zone, this is at least horizontal distance not less than forty-three thousand two hundred feet. So it's about eight miles from each end of the runway. No permit shall be required for a military structure of blah, less than seventy-five feet. No structure within eight miles.
No permits required.
Outside of that.
Seems, it seems a long. I'm sure it's probably standing.
Maybe they'll check that a few times.
It has to do with airspace or precision approach.
And that was, and that's what I was going to say. Being a pilot, when you start to add things that could be in the approach path, then our minimums increase as far as equal in that weather, IFR flying, those types of things. And so that would be my concern, and that's probably why that.
So what you're saying is mostly the concern is, the further away you get, the taller you're able to connect structures. So you know, none within seventy-five feet if you were in Roosevelt City. You could approve a five-story.
Further out, you could. Okay, we were. Farther out, the higher it will.
So that's.
Closer you get to the airport.
Just wow, eight miles is a big restriction, but I understand.
So that would be four miles from the, from the center, right? Four miles either direction from the center of the.
Forty-three thousand feet from each end.
Oh, wow, so we're talking, that's a total of sixteen miles, not eight miles.
Eight on each side.
Yeah.
That was applied to the county, you guys go to the county and request.
Yeah, and so we're talking about this one with.
Yeah, we have to have it approved by that.
Question I have, Mayor, too, this, I would imagine is consistent with the FAA requirements. Is it any different than the FAA stringent rules or is it just their requirements?
It's mostly their requirements. We've taken that permitted or modified it for our city and our state and our elevation and all of that. But it is, it's coming from what the FAA has and then what's recommended from our year on, on knowing our approaches.
Yeah, there, there's a little bit of mixed content here. It is FAA, then also some of, some of what's in, see on the picture up here, comes from standard DOT requirements for what's permissible underneath closer proximity airspace. Wash dot, for example, has a very strong program in what they allow for permitted uses in their airspace. And some of the language I've used for this is referenced in this document.
Do we have any areas within those zones that are troublesome now or are we compliant right now?
No, I think we're compliant. We're just trying to make sure that we don't.
Continue the future soon.
This is really being relaxed and looking ahead.
This is only our seven thirty-seven max weights right here. Which is going to happen in the next. So also, the only thing that I don't have a concern about is there is that company that has cranes just off the end of the runway twenty-five. And.
If they set a crane, they have to get it already and that's in the day.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I flew them past there and I spent some in the air and I thought.
Yeah, they have to get a, that's FAA requirement already that if they, if they set a crane within a certain distance of the airport, they have to get it. It's like flying a drone in here, which makes sense, not saying they can't do it, but if you get to have it on a drone.
Right.
Right, you're flying it. Just like we did when we built, though, when that Strata built theirs and they set a crane, they had to set.
And so.
And they, they're aware, and when we set those at the Strata, we even helped Strata because they were new to that. We helped them in that process of filing those to make sure and will help others if they're in that area.
The city felt this only four sixty-five for Strata.
We want, we want to help them, we don't want this to be restricted, but we want to be helpful. We just want to make sure that. We're trying both those, the flying public, the.
Yeah. We get the permits issued, I don't know if it has been, but to make sure that we have it on our notice.
They usually fly. And what I've heard, they have been on the strata.
Perfect. Any other comment, questions from the council? Seeing that, we'll open that up to a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public, either for or against? Seeing none, we'll open that up to a public hearing. Uh, are there any comments from the public, either for or against? Seeing none, we'll consider ourselves back into regular session and would entertain a motion to approve.
Sure.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman White and a second by Councilman White, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Um, ordinance twenty nineteen four twenty-nine, this is amending title seventeen, uh, chapter seventeen and eighteen permitted principal uses. Uh, this has to do with agricultural use in city limits, I believe.
It does, it, it actually specifically agricultural animals. Um, now, in an RR one, we allow and permit those and those are all within that's fine. So this doesn't affect anything there. This is just the smaller, more residential zones. The R one sixteen, R one ten, this isn't affecting um the larger zones. So our R one twenty, the RR one, it's not affecting those. Um, and it is still allowing um to own the soil, raising crops, horticulture, gardening. All of those kind of items are still there. It's just saying, when, when we define this, um, we've had some issues with um agricultural animals in the residential zone. Now, once, if, if and when this asks, um, obviously grandfather in laws, if, if they're already have it, they're already doing that, that, that doesn't change what they could do now. It only affects what, what would be there in the future. Um, so it's a, it's a clear up of what the understanding is, um, and it has been some of that. So anyway, that, it just proven moving one word twice, and that's all, all it should do. And it's really based on the definition of that word. Agriculture by itself, defining that way wouldn't be a problem, we define it, um, and where we define that word, that's the real comfort.
Any questions?
Yeah, what, what animals in particular have we had an issue with in these areas?
There'll be larger animals, um, goats, pigs, you know, you know, RR one six, um, we're having some, some problems with some of those, uh, horse.
Chickens.
I love chickens. I think, uh, I think chickens are allowed, you know, if the council would, I think everybody ought to have a few chickens. Well, maybe no roosters. No roosters, but.
Is there any wording in there that specifically allows or disallows certain types of animals?
There is in the other zone. So, when, when it is allowed by count, um, in an RR one, it specifically says per acre, you can have this much, um, for the first twenty thousand square feet, which in an RR one six doesn't count twenty thousand square feet. Um, and so it says for the first twenty thousand square feet, you can have one horse. For the next, uh, ten thousand, you can have another. And it's kind of in, it's that. So there is ways that that's specified. Um, so, in, in the larger zones, maybe you can have dogs, cats, those things are not affected, domesticated animals.
I guess my, my thought is this in RR one six, if people are allowed to have chickens and nobody says anything, and the neighbor takes it a step further and a step further, where do you then end and say, okay, fine, chickens are okay, but these are not? I just see that. I just wonder if we have to be that specific, so we don't.
This doesn't necessarily get it that specific, but if you can't be sure for the cow and horse.
Because they're already have to have a certain amount.
You can't define those inside that, so those, those wouldn't be allowed. Could be misinterpreted the way it is, but that would be allowed. We don't believe it is, we don't believe that was the intent. Um, and so, this is kind of.
I, I do know that there are a lot of people that like to have chickens and so, that's allowed, I think we'll keep what people.
If you want to specify specifically chicken, I'm full of that too.
You know, I have a daughter in Boise, and Boise and they have, have chickens, and we wanted to get a couple of lambs for their kids to grow there in their downtown Boise. And they could do that until they're nine months old. They can raise a lamb until they're nine, and when they're nine months old, they gotta be out of there.
That's tough to.
That's interesting.
Decide, decide who comes and determines.
Hey, oh, no.
I don't know.
Figure the city more and more.
It was interesting. Oh, if you sure have chickens, you want to control it specifically, make sure that, that would work. I think if, I know a few people that they would like chickens, but I don't think they're as much of a menace as a cow, unless you're the parents. Want me to add it?
I'll add later.
Whatever your motion is, you can ask.
That makes a big difference.
And we have to put a number on it. And I think that the other one would be applying, it does define rabbits and chickens inside of how many.
See, rabbits and chickens, I feel like ra- a rabbit would be allowed.
So we stay out of that.
We might have to adjust later.
The only reason we're small. I don't know, those two things, I think.
We, we want to consider, you know, one thing to consider is what's the nuisance of those, no matter where they are, you know? Maybe it's not, maybe it is, but I think there has to be, we have to take consideration of the neighbors and the nuisance factor.
Exactly. Well, whatever that is annoying is a. And I'm sorry for all the dog lovers in here. I have a couple, but a barking dog is as annoying as a rooster, so.
We have a nuisance order, it's there, come back. That is, that is taking care of another matter, so if it becomes a nuisance.
So if my neighbor has a rooster.
Oh.
And it, and it goes to call him. What ordinance overrides what? Does the, the question becomes, well, I have the building, I have the chicken, I couldn't tell if it was a rooster or not when I got it. I got it.
And you know it's a rooster.
I do think, personally, I think there are people that. I don't think chickens or rabbits are an issue personally, not my feeling.
I know four H has asked me if there's any ordinance that's restricting those kinds of things, because they prefer to have that availability to their, to their group. To raise some chickens and bunnies and rabbits if you have, so.
So do we have a restriction on that right now? Chickens, but the rabbits.
Just our current ordinance, no specifications in there.
Well, there are, there are limits of, of quantity, I think.
Yeah, there's, there's. And then may still be the best way, just to.
Just to keep those.
A quantity, because that's a.
And not everybody's lot in the city is the same size, so it would determine how many you could have, those were hanging on here.
So.
That's quite a good lot.
It's amazing how that grows. Um, the one little thing, there's so many options.
And we may want to do something like this in the other zone. This is what is in the RR one. Um, and it specifies for each, for the first twenty thousand, you can have twenty-five rabbits. Every ten thousand above that, have another twenty-five rabbits. You have an acre, you can have seventy-five rabbits. So, it's funny, funny, I think. So, we probably don't want that to be inside of the program. We could do, we could do a cap ration or something like this and add. If there's ones that you want, because rabbits.
I think it would be good in a, no, the RR one where you have a large lot, I think it's a little different. I think it's when you get to these smaller lots where you have, it's just small, you know, I look at, uh, you know, level property I have, um, it's a lot different than even the lot where me and my neighbor live, in size wise. And then it's a lot different than Stonegate, where those lots are. So I think that. Lot size comes into, comes into front, for sure. So I think bringing that into the residential audit and finding something there, so there's some definitions.
One of the thoughts that I had, just looking at that, somebody's lost. You're, you're in State, on State Street and whatever. But I, just looking at it, to me, it's pretty simple. Everything uh from goats and sheep and above would be eliminated from the smaller. Um, the R, what would you say?
RR one, RR, RR one six and RR one ten.
Yeah, RR one ten and RR one six. So everything above uh the line for the goats, so rabbits and poultry could exist in the RR one ten, RR one six, and then we quantify um, a reasonable, reasonable amount in that, and I think. That, that I don't, that's my personal opinion.
I, I think the methodology there too, if you come up with something, you know, same thing would exist to get a hundred cats. So, yeah, so it's just, it's just getting that, the definition of what's expected, so.
Maybe could we massage that, um, take a look and quantify some of those?
Yep.
And I think we're, we would be as favorable in the rabbits and poultry, and then we just need to get the number up there. And maybe bring that back in. Perfect. Does that sound okay, or is it?
I think the thought that came to my mind when Councilman Labor brought up the sheep up to nine months old, I think a big reason for that was probably for people who like to raise them for the fair or something like that, that it wouldn't make it impossible. Uh, that's just a thought. I'm not saying we should do that, but, but there are people that do like to do that, and it would give an opportunity if you put that goats and sheep up to nine month old, then they're gone, but that, that's probably why that was in the Boise code.
I think it's definitely something we, we need to go back and work on then, and some of these suggestions can be in and into.
Look at it, I, I'm not dead set for that, but I think that you would have a handful of people that would utilize that.
How many we define it, I mean, that's hard to enforce, but at least it, it does allow that, so. Unless, unless somebody feels differently, I think we table that one and bring it back to the next council meeting.
It's just fine.
All right, revised budget and then tentative budget. John, is that you? You're on.
You tracked it quite a crowd. Last year you didn't have nearly a entire crowd that's on you.
Usually when I start, they don't leave. You know, last year, the figures were a little smaller, so I decided to make one bigger, to make it easier to say, so.
That's all, I appreciate that.
All right. Want me to start then?
Yes.
All right, page two. I'm trying to remember them this time, but we'll stay on the same page here. Um, page two shows the SOSTAX trend. Um, you'll notice, you'll notice there's quite a variation in ups and downs through each month. I mean, sometimes we have some, some companies that report monthly, some quarterly, and I think we see some of that in those ups and downs. Um, but we really look at the twelve-month average moving trend here, and you can see we had a, a pretty low spot in the middle of twenty sixteen, or the end of twenty sixteen, and then it started coming back up, and it's been very gradual, really. So, you can see where we're at in the, as of April twenty nineteen. So, any questions there?
I think just an observation, trends, you know, if you look at February fifteen to December eighteen, it looks like that was, those are the two peaks, but that's a positive.
Right, absolutely. I know that there's been additional businesses that have come into the area that have added to that too, so, um, we're pretty fortunate that way. As far as the fiscal year twenty nineteen, which ends June thirtieth of this year, it's a, this is reopening some of the main points that I felt like were important to make mention of. Um, on the general fund, um, SOSTAX is anticipated to be within around thirty-five K of original budget. Um, so we're, you know, we're planning on leaving that the same, unless you, unless the council feels differently. Um, highway tax is anticipated to be about fifty-nine K more than original. Um, other taxes and revenues are expected to be about fifty K more than original budgeted. Interest, um, from investments and whatnot, uh, have increased by more than a hundred and twenty K due to better interest rates lately, so. Uh, I agree. Um, police department, we've obtained some, the police department has obtained some grants through Homeland Security Department of Justice, which is a, equated at around thirty K, um, which has helped with uh some of the funding and equipment they needed as well. Um, other budgeted revenue adjustments are not as significant, but more closely reflect trends. Um, as for expenses on the general fund, we've increased the capital projects fund transfer by uh three hundred and thirty-nine K. Um, a lot of that money is used for infrastructure like streets and, and whatnot, and we feel like uh that's a, a great investment to continue to try to keep these roads caught up, so. Um, we've also increased the transfer to debt service fund by thirty-three K. We had a uh uh, a twenty eighteen road improvement grant and loan that we were awarded during this year. Some of those type of things that were awarded during the year, it's about impossible to anticipate. So, sometimes we have to make those adjustments when we reopen. Um, total expenses, total expenses excluding the transfer to debt service and capital projects actually decreased by a hundred and seventy-eight K as far as the, an adjustment there. But the transfer to capital projects and debt service increased by three hundred and seventy, seventy-two K. Um, any other adjustments have been based on simply reallocation based on the needs of the year. Um, any questions on the general fund thus far? Okay. Uh, general fund debt service, expecting to, well, I think I mentioned that about, that's just a transfer into the debt service based on that twenty eighteen road bond. Um, as far as the capital project side of, of the general fund, um, we were awarded the project grant of one point two mil with the forest farming bond of two hundred and sixty K. Um, we've had to make some adjustments on the, on the budgeted items of revenue for um airport due to some of the grants we've received that way too. Um, and plus recently, we got some news that we are awarded a nine million grant for airport, which is a great thing too, so. Um. As far as other capital projects and adjustments, I'll put that on more of a, a summary page on another sheet that was for you guys, so. Uh, water fund, um, we've had to adjust for CBG money that we've received by two hundred and twenty-eight K. Um, some adjustments in the connections, um, of eighteen K, contributions of infrastructure improvements, nineteen K, and uh proposed connection adjustments of forty-seven K. Um, something that I'm pretty excited about, we, you know, I'm meeting with the finance committee, it's been, it's been a little bit ago with the mayor and Councilman Fair, we talked about splitting up the secondary culinary and storm to be more consistent, or at least a better split, so we can see what's happening between culinary, secondary and storm. And so that's been a big project this year. And any, really, most adjustments that you see in the, in the uh reopen of twenty nineteen are a reflection of that work, trying to better split between the three. Um, any additional depreciation, sometimes we'll have to close projects mid-year, um, which account for increased depreciation, and that's, that's why we've had to make an adjustment there. Um, any detail on the capital projects and the water fund is reflected in more of a detailed summary on another page. Sewer fund, um, proposing additional eighty-eight K of operation revenue due to wastewater revenue. Um, also, it's a slight reduction of uh per connections. Um, grants reduced to actual, um, sometimes we tried to anticipate, but uh it didn't always come around like we thought, so. Uh, contributions for eight south sewer, round twenty-two, right-of-way revenue of forty-three. Um, anything else in this, in this reopen reflects agreements, current agreements and whatnot, so.
That reflects the agreement that we're going to talk about tonight, I imagine.
What's that?
That reflects the agreement that we talked about tonight.
With, with the uh.
Forty-three thousand, we get the trans.
Right.
We're expecting you to provide.
Well, that would be the next year. Correction there. Um, any questions on the twenty nineteen? Okay. I'm gonna stop there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to approve the revised budget now. You'll have to help me out on this one. Do we open the budget? Or, or do we just approve the revised budget as presented by?
Do we open the budget or, or do we just approve the revised budget as presented by?
Well, you open it for public hearing for comment and then you just approve the revised budget, the revised tennis budget. Um, for the revised budget, yeah. For the revised budget.
Do we have, um, any questions or comments for John on the revised budget? From the council? Good work. Saying no one will consider ourselves in a public hearing and would entertain any questions or comments from the public at this time, if there are any. And would entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Life and a second by Councilman Wayne, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is unanimous. Um, and then the budget back to you.
Turn around and see if. They're still there, so. We're still like. We've looked at my being with it.
Again, this sees what people get saved.
Okay, so twenty twenty preliminary budget. As mentioned, this is a preliminary, so we, we try to forecast, um, what the revenues are expected to do. And then whatever the revenues are expected to do during that year, we fit, we fit it in the anticipated means as far as expenditure go within that forecast. Um, so the budget approach, as mentioned, uses, uses to determine the levels of expenditure. Then initial evaluation on expected revenue followed by an outlined expenditure plan that fits within those revenue expectations. So all funds, we expect revenues and applicable funds to increase by one percent. Generally speaking, some revenues are more specific based on agreement or whatnot. Um, we expect expenses to increase by about one percent. Um, as far as health insurance costs, we expect an overall of seven, seven percent due to consistently riding cost of healthcare. We actually consider that a.
That's a pretty conservative, conservative number too, I believe.
Right, and we've, we've been pretty fortunate that way and.
We've been able to receive a renewal number, so we are able to match that, which is really nice. Good match.
Yeah, pretty fortunate that way, so.
That's a compliment to your staff too, with the use of healthcare.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, when you said property auto insurance increased up by two percent. Um, in line with Western Regional CPI, two and, two point four and, um, other life organizations, uh, similar and local were initiating or proposing a two point five increase of COLA to find an, an employees. Um, in conjunction with that, initiating one percent increase of market rate adjustments. Um, these are more focused on finding employees that have a chasm between market, market rate and actual. And making sure that we're being fair across the board there, so. Um, as Mayor has mentioned and asked for previous years, we, we listed the elected appointed wage rates, uh, current and proposed. So if you have any questions or whatnot about that. Um, general fund, specifically, uh, revenues, we expect to climb by about one percent. Uh, sales tax, I was looking at this again just before this meeting, um, as far as sales tax and the percentage of incline and whatnot. And I feel it's a conservative approach to, uh, stick with a five percent increase based on a recovering economy. It's not, I believe it's, it's more conservative. It, it could be higher, but I, I, we believe we would rather be a little bit conservatively lower and fit expenditures within that conservative approach. Um, all of the taxes are expected to increase at around a conservative two percent. Um, expenses are expected to increase to one percent except the following. Um, I know in previous council meetings, they've talked about the strike force budget. Um, we added in another six point nine K into that, bringing it from seven point six up to fourteen point five. Um, and I checked with chief and I believe that's what was anticipated there. Um, also we've increased the police budget by three percent. This is going off the twenty nineteen revised to the twenty twenty.
John, sorry. Go ahead, stop you there. Um, go over to those task force meetings. I understand that we were already contributing around twelve, thirteen thousand a year to that.
So that's in, in time. It's more than cash.
So lifetime.
And this is, this is the increase from cash. I still, we still have the lifetime in.
Verify that.
Good point.
Cause it would be a net addition of six, nine hundred a year for that.
Right. Okay, um, let's see. Maintaining similar levels in the park maintenance budget, um, also included a baseball field replacement dirt rehab on field number five. And I know we've consistently in the past few years, or a couple of years at least, uh, done some replacements on baseball fields.
Uh, it's, uh, right now is the time that, that's really being appreciated too. I mean, it's, I know it's not used to around, but it's made a phenomenal difference in playing field.
Right.
And very appreciated by people.
Okay. Um, also, once again, based on the field council and some of the, um, feedback that we've been getting from through surveys from master planner and whatnot. Um, we've increased the recreation budget by about five percent from the twenty nineteen fiscal year revised to twenty twenty. Um, any questions up to that point or comments? Okay, uh, general fund debt service. Um, I've added some more specifics here as far as where we're currently at with debt service on the general fund side. Um, twenty-ten street bond payment for a hundred and ten annually for this coming year at a one and a half with interest rate, which is pretty good, around two hundred and twelve K principal remaining on that bond. Aquatic center, we make a ninety-three thousand dollars payment this coming year, one and a half interest rate and around one point three nine million left in principal on that. Twenty eighteen road improvement bond payment for nineteen K, that's a two and a half interest rate. That's around one forty-six K principal remaining. Any questions there? Also, all, all the interest rate rates that we currently have are actually under the P T F rate that we are invested in, so. It's a good sign.
No worry on paying off, cause we're getting more in interest on our money than we would, we would save, so.
Um, if, if it works for you, Mayor, I was gonna skip the capital projects and review those more in detail cause I have a five year projection.
Okay.
That gives it, I'm gonna show you more detail. Um, water fund, revenue is expected to remain relatively flat. I know some of the factors to consider are consistent rate, a quantity similar, also the weather affects it quite drastically. If you can guess what the weather's gonna do this year, I'd love to know, so.
It's gonna be cold and rainy, at least the week.
Yeah, I think that's a high probability. Um, some of the other factors to incorporate into revenue, um, well, it's truly not much different other than some of the unanticipated or interest rates or whatnot. And also grant amounts that we haven't added in there too, so. As far as expenditures, we anticipate roughly by one percent, a lot of different ones, but, uh, one of the key points in this fund is to note that our sand wash secondary water costs are going to increase by two hundred K because, uh, our, what do we get, fifteen hundred more?
Two hundred and fifty-four.
More, more feet of water. Um.
Well, now the sand wash, it's that we have that and it's not going to be contracted out, correct? So we're gonna have that liability.
Two hundred thousand we'll have to pay for it.
Correct. And, and just, just to clarify quickly, so we have three thousand total acre feet in sand wash. Um, fifteen hundred of that is contracted out to, um, the state for fish flows down below. They're not going to renew that contract in twenty twenty, which means we either decide to try to sell that water, keep it or keep it, and if we keep it, then we have different duty obligation thing. So that's why the difference is.
Right. But we figured over time we'll be able to put on more connections or do other things with that, sell it out. Um, but at this point, we're gonna take that cost and don't actually have current spots to sell it. But it's a long-term, it's a long-term benefit, but it's a short-term expense, but, uh, it's gonna be significant for the next few years.
That was a one-time offering. We had to either do it or we weren't gonna get a chance at it again, so.
Right, yeah. It's definitely something key to remember when you're looking at the proposed value for water, so. Two hundred K. Um, also on the next line, uh, we talked about Johnson Water Rotes. We've added twenty-five point five K into the water expense budget for that anticipated. Um, also matched the victory water budget to twenty nineteen, fiscally revised. I went back and tried to follow the trends to, to make sure that we're anticipating all the victory water that we anticipated on, you think, so. We've left that at three hundred and fifty K based on that, so.
Another thing, with the victory pipeline, really quick enough. With the victory pipeline, we had a thousand acre feet that we were committed for and we were able to reduce that liability by two hundred acre feet. It was a good thing for us, I'd say, because we weren't using it anywhere that high, high cost, so. We at least did reduce some of that liability, cause and we're unable to take all that water. It'd have to be perfect conditions to be able to take that out of the thousand acre feet. And so realistically, even eight hundred pushing it, but we were able to get it, our liability to get out of it. So that saved thirty-five.
Considering that we, on a previous budget, we had, I think, four hundred and thirty K budget for victory. Now we're down to three hundred and fifty, so it's a, that was a good thing, I think, so. Um, as far as water capital projects, I'll review that in more detail. That works again on the summary page. Um, sewer fund, most revenues are expected to climb by one and a half percent. Um, from, uh, this is comparing revised twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Um, also we anticipate not receiving as much revenue on wastewater revenue from oil field uses this year. Um, expenses overall, operational expenses are expected to increase by about two percent. Um, and once again, on the capital projects piece, I'll go that more summary on another page. Any questions up to that point or? Um, and as noted on the previous budget, um, um, any expenditure in revenue on sanitation fund reflects the, the agreement with pain K. Um, page eight. That goes over the, the fund organizational charts. I think it's a good thing to just remind us of how the funding flows and, and the governmental versus enterprise funds are very significant. Enterprise funds, putting water, sewer and sanitation are really to be treated as a separate entity in a way. Not legally, but not a legal entity, but separate company almost, so.
Identify incoming expenses.
Right.
Correct.
I better watch performance of that particular fund, so. Okay, um, page nine. So here, but I've actually went through a lot of the significance of a lot of these details here in the summary pages that I just went through. Um, so if you have any questions on that, I, I'm happy to go through them. Um, some of the revenue in the general fund, you'll notice, um, twenty nineteen fiscal year original budget, that column. And then the next column is the revised, what, what we reviewed as the revised. The next column is the difference between the two, so you can see the changes by department, by, by fund. And then the twenty twenty to compare the two, to compare one fiscal year to the next. Um, some of the things, just some quick notes, like the fire department, for example, we had some additional expenditures with the Delaware H fire and whatnot. We received some funding from different government entities to help with that, but we still have to recognize the, the expenditures, forest funding expenditures too, so. Um, then a little farther, uh, any questions on page nine? I, I'm happy to go into. Uh, page ten. Um, just to make a, a quick note, um, as far as water depreciation expenses, um, it, it's fairly significant in the water fund and it, we anticipate this in the revised budget alone around nine hundred and two thousand dollars in a year of depreciation itself, so. When, when you're thinking of depreciation expense, it's pretty significant in a water fund, so. Um, any questions there?
We're still waiting. We're not ready to ask you.
Nothing like, nothing like a buddy said of it, so. All right, um, page twelve, this is more for information if you, if you want to adjust anything. We tried to look at a five-year plan by the same type of categories, looking out to twenty twenty-four. Um, different factors, different inflation factors. Um, unless you'd like me to, oh.
We'll read this.
That's in that process.
In twenty twenty-four.
That's right. See, that's, it's the same thing on the page fourteen. On page fifteen, these are the capital projects. We've tried to lay them out in a five-year outlook, um, beginning with year-to-date, July to February, in the first column. And we've broken out the projects by department. Um, so you'll notice, I mean, some, I'll point out some of the key, key pieces. You'll notice the cemetery, um, a lot more reopened. And then down here, you'll, you'll notice the, the building plans in twenty twenty, followed by more, um, interior road improvements and whatnot. Um, and then the fire, we, and we've gotten with all the departments to get the feedback, so we try to anticipate all these long-term as well. Um, you want me to go into detail on these?
We can do that. I can then review it with you.
Okay, okay. Cause I, I figure this is more of a tentative process and have to be out.
This is a review for a month, so.
This one, looking quick up page fifteen, we have our airport, which plays with the test, the two different ramps.
Right.
Anticipate that being a one-year project. And so wrapped up.
We expect to start July, uh, in July, we'll expect it to be done in just three months, three or four months. So yeah, we're gonna get right on it and it'll be done. It's all.
Uh, I love those projects that are within the same fiscal year. Makes sense, obviously. Any other questions you wanna look at there? Page seventeen. Um, so it was a good idea to put all the debt that we have in the city on one page. So you can see what, whatever fund it is, this is how the, the trends of, of debt service go. So you see at the bottom, the grand total, uh, it never peaks over seven hundred thousand, but in twenty twenty-two, it drops down to five hundred and eighty. Now, keep in mind that I think two, two years ago, we paid over a million dollars off in, in debt. So it's interest-bearing, so all our enterprise funds, there's no interest-bearing debt in our enterprise funds, which is, I believe, pretty significant. Um, page eighteen, you're in a pie chart here. I mean, it's easier on the mind. Um, notice that, uh, our sales tax percentage is about thirty-one percent in the projected twenty twenty bid budget. Um, that's pretty, pretty significant, um, especially when we see, we've seen a swing in the past of what, thirty percent down in sales tax before. That puts us, it's, it's kind of risky there, so we try to manage within that risk. Um, any questions there? We're on the second page of the next page, page nineteen. This is the general fund itself expenditures. Notice that our, our police department is twenty-six percent and then going down from there. So you can tell our focus, as far as our expenditure focus is very much, uh, police. Anything else you want to, to, Mayor?
Not for clean, is there any, anything in the council? Uh, very well. Lots of work was in the process. And Dave, you've been involved along the way and I've tried to be as much as possible lately. It's been difficult, any, anything you'd like to mention?
Um, now on meetings we have, I'm gonna cover the same stuff.
Now, meetings we have, I'm gonna cover the same stuff. I do have one. There's kind of a, it's a sensitive issue because I know that it's, um, it's dealing with, uh, wages and, and I don't need to be insensitive anyway, but I have people to answer to. And then I know tomorrow will be phone calls. So the wages of the city manager, the police chief, and the city manager, I, I 100% believe you guys agree with Joe. Um, a 3% increase is a little bit high for what I would expect to do in one year. I worked in federal government many years, we wanted to get a raise. But this year, we got a one and a half percent raise, which was pretty good. And I think you guys do amazing work. I just want to know how the public, um, in this room feels about that, if it's. And really, I, I mean, these are the people that came to listen to this tonight, and I'm gonna value their opinion. But I would just like to hear what, what they have to say regarding that.
Just so, just so, just to make sure, I maybe I misspoke. The actual COLA itself is two and a half percent for the proposed 2020. But the, as, as mentioned, the, the market rate adjustments, um, were another 1%, but that's just more of filling in gaps between the market and the, the distinct case I missed all the time.
You know, what it's, but it's not across everybody, it will be across isolated ones, like the reserve officers. We have, they've been, um, the rate of that has gone up in the market and will adjust the balance to that rate. Because if it, if the rate of a salary for a particular individual accelerates, the, the market accelerates faster than our cost of living increases. We'll try to isolate those individual ones. So that's not a 1% across, so they're not three and a half. It's that one reserve across is to say, if we need to do it for police, or, you know, do it for this particular officer, you know, their years of experience compared to, to the market says, we need to bring them up to at least what the market pays. So, it's a, it's one, it's an avenue which we use to, um, facilitate making sure people stay in that market category. It's not a, it's not across the board, so that's why that one reserve sector. The two and a half is the cost of living, um, we're checked, you know, that's the hospitals, that's what they're doing. We've checked with the school district, we've checked with, uh, other entities, um, and like, um, we've checked with, um,
City manager group.
City manager group, uh, throughout the state. So we've checked with several others, um, in the CPI, to kind of watch the CPI, and it's where we really, really look, so.
Good question.
What's a good question?
Something that might be helpful too, just a little backstory. Year or two, I don't remember how many years ago it's been, we actually commissioned a salary study of all employees in the city. We made some adjustments a couple of years ago. So the market rate is certainly consistent with what the state's done this year. State's done two and a half percent for employees. But also the 1% gap money, as you look at salaries over time, sometimes it's hard to keep those adjusted. So, I understand what you're saying with, you know, you look at, you look at the value of work performed, you look where an individual is, and you look at the ability to move them along in that scale. There has to be something, some type of mechanism for that place. It's just very difficult when you're dealing with tax dollars, because you have, you know, those sensitivities, but you also have that need to retain those employees and bring them along. You don't have a, a revenue source that's like a business, you know, it's, it's different that way. So, I think, you know, from that perspective, dealing in those type of situations, I think it's really solid.
Question, how is it in the, in the oil field? Like wages and increases, is, is that even happening?
Um, yeah, I mean, we do the same thing. We compare to different corporations, you know, like you're talking about, I go around different cities to see what happens there. We do the same thing. We look up peer companies and try and adjust the wages to that. Now, we used to have a new company come in, and so we have, everybody with our company kind of took a little bit of a bump because, uh, Canada does that a little better, they go through, out. Since they're, they're a Canadian company, they look throughout Canada and the US and try to compare wages. I mean, it's, it's done everywhere.
You know, in the, the retail, it's, it is still flat. I think, you know, we're not seeing, at least in our business, the service and shop is really strong. The other part, it's really extraordinarily competitive right now.
So the, uh, the city management staff have really sucked it up. What I see, uh, Phil'sville City is operating extremely efficiently on the people that they have. You can't, you know, you can't, I mean, it's not an equal world. Because maybe Sandy said yourself, that's supposed to be, but they get a percentage. That doesn't mean that we give our people, this city's in great condition right now, as it appeared to in the past. Think it might be terrible, but I don't think you can take, uh, federal or, or other states. I'm glad that I think that, uh, that that's more than fair for, for a wage, especially as, as efficient and streamlined and lean as the city is running right now. My two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Okay, thanks, John. Appreciate that. We will consider ourselves in public hearing and will allow, um, the public's comments, if they so desire, on the, on the 2020 budget.
Go ahead, Bo. Well, I'm, uh, I said my reword, I appreciate the job. We just stayed away from that. Sydney's called me to say something, and I think I'll just try to address, uh, some of the concerns you had with this issue on, you know, wages, cost of living, uh, living wage, and how it applies to the, the different, uh, responsibilities of city employees. And I would just echo what, uh, what Chrisa Wade, Chrisa Verity said, and I think the, the wages are fair and the gun market's fine. I think the city is running very efficiently, and you gotta do, you gotta, you can retain the employees. And I think that's, that's what happened from, from the citizens' perspective.
Thank you, thank you. Sydney, did you, he volunteered that you might want to comment. Is that true? Right, any other comments from the public? Seeing that, we'll consider ourselves back in regular session and would entertain a motion to approve, well, a motion.
A motion to approve. Or a motion. I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to.
Yeah. The dedicated budget for 2020.
So we have a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll second that motion.
And that motion would by Councilman Baird, this second by Councilman Verity, all in paper. I like it. Any opposed? Thank you all for your comments. We'll go to K and K Sanitation. Uh, Mark, you're up.
We're in overtime.
Yeah. You got us. We got us. A little record thing here. I want you to look at, as to what we've done out there. We're, uh, you something right with it. That's okay. And what we done, as you well know, a couple of weeks ago or so, we had cleanup. Uh, let's go down that for a little bit. This year was a banner bumper year out there. Had 136 tons of trash, 400 point truckloads. And we had the three roll-offs down from southeast in the town. They produced about, well, over 15, what, about 450 a ton. And you see that we've managed about a hundred and, well, over 150 ton of trash on the cleanup. This boils down to mine semi-loads, run over to the landfill. Right down there, that's what we paid out in wages. Now down here works the backhoe use. Deborah and I are just looking at it, and you need to double that right there, because that was going, split more than double, because that went only for one day. We had two days for the other five working days. And so, uh, what did you figure, 36 hours? About 36 hours on that 38. And the three roll-offs, then what they charged out for that $200 each. And so, in comparison to last year, we're 50 ton more this year over last year.
That's like 50%.
You know, uh, we have four more semi-loads of trash gathered up out there this year.
So the city's looking clean up.
Well, it comes from somewhere.
Well, they're getting mixed and cranny backyard.
Uh, it comes from somewhere. We were there on the first Saturday, and generally, with that noon call, we'd go down and fry a hamburger and sit down and eat it. This year, we didn't have time. I mean, there were just a contiguous stream of, we had, we were there. We had three girls in the office. We weighed everything, and one was that old rusty pickup, that white one, that one was a bent tail light, you know? They were trying to get that ball out to get her weight straight. Anyway, that's what we come up with, as you can see there. A couple of things we'd like to talk about for just a moment. One of them has a little bit of a history in the past, we've had roll-offs around. I talked to Mary about this, I think, this is. Us personally, we work for you folks, but we would like to, uh, discourage that. Yet, uh, the history of them has been, this year was okay. But days gone past, until we opened this up out there, the way we've done it, they've always been a mess. But, uh, the way we've done it out there, the people come, they're been patient, they've been willing to work with us, and it's been, it's been okay.
I think that those really do, in certain areas, encourage a lot of cleanup, to where they never, they might not even have a pickup or stuff for, when they're figuring where it was in a couple of other places. If that wouldn't have happened, they just wouldn't have got it out there, so.
I appreciate you on that, I appreciate Councilman Baird's, um, co-activity and getting the neighborhood behind that too. I mean, that took some time and effort to make sure the code were utilized and, uh.
And that's a great area, and there's a few others, so that's great. I, you feel what?
Yeah. We didn't have as much participations we'd like to have, but it was, it was kind of, we got to fill that.
It's great. Well, three of them, a lot of times, uh, there's a lot to hold that in there.
There's been some talk. Watch Act, a few years ago, had a period of time for what we've just gone through. And they were swamped out there, there were some rats out on the highway. Or they've gone to a voucher thing of some sort. Can't think too much about it, give you something to think about for another year. Me personally, I would like to just jump on it, like we have done, and get it behind us. We can keep track of all of this a lot easier. The county has taken care of the bill, of taking this trash and covering it. And for us to go throughout the year, uh, kind of keep track of all of that, I don't know how to do it as efficiently as this. Now, you can see a figure there. We would like you folks to figure out where you could efficiently put that money.
Thank you.
Very kind.
For you that, for you in the audience that can't see, $9,000 that K and K's donated to Roswell City. But I think, so, a significant amount.
Apparently that'd be more.
Correct.
If you add those backhoe 36s today, you know, it'd be.
Well, well, it's just that says eight, it should have said 36, the number's.
The number's correct.
Anyway, um, find a place to put it. We started out at Swilling Pool a few years ago, and, uh, it's, I guess that's when it come and gone. So find a good place to put it, and, uh, we will come enjoy UVI C or, or some utility or something.
We'll have a lot of candy for, uh, comedy.
Anyway, we'd just like you to know that we do appreciate working with the city, we appreciate working with the people. I said, we're, we are enduring, boy, and so, uh, but thank you for what you do to help us.
Well, we appreciate you working with us on those, uh, those roll-offs and, and every year, participating in this. I think every year that I've been involved with city government, uh, you've donated that back, and, and that's a huge.
Very generous.
Yeah, very generous.
Thank you. John was talking about the dead of Odell, and I turned to Deborah, and I said, I'm a dead part of this program. But anyway, there's anything we can do to improve, we are.
Thank you. I guess, I just drove by the cemetery this evening before coming up here. And all new, it looked like all new, can, all prepared, already down there lined up on, on each area. And I noticed when the high school opened, how well prepared you were, and, I mean, those students are very meaningful, meaningful for our community. Thank you. So I'm watching UVI C, it's got to be almost tonight, you know?
But we went, we went down here a while back, we have a meeting every Tuesday morning, all these kind of things. And here, uh, a while back, we thought we were gonna need, you know, containers, three yards. So we bought three semi-loads of them, and they're about gone, you know, spaced out. We've been switching around and trying to keep those, uh, finish around in areas with nice looking stuff. Uh, we ordered a semi-load of, uh, the trash cans on wheels, and we was hoping they would be here the first of the month. But, uh, our suppliers said it's gonna be them for the end of June. But they will have some new cans here for UVI C to put around up there, so they're, freshly deodorized.
Thanks for the, the, in our community.
Thanks for the information.
So, well, I'd like to say, you guys put it where you feel it for the best. Good number, actually.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks for your, maybe.
We're gonna re, no, yeah, no one's voting least enough, she's been waiting patiently there. Thank you.
We just need to do a lot of adjustment. When we got married, our, you know, father had bought us an acre of land up on the corner of 10th West and First North. And for our loan, they only wanted to loan a quarter acre, which was great. But it's come time that we've sold our property, and for now, we've used that straight back. And it's a little hard to cut that off and, um, not have it there anymore. So we're just asking for a lot line adjustment for, to make two half acre parcels, basically. Uh, parcel A and parcel B, instead of having a nail shaped unit with a corner piece, it'll just be straight back, straight back. So that works. That's what we're asking to do.
They have done planning and zoning, planning and zoning, they've reviewed. Uh, one thing it's not shown on here, but it is on the plan, I believe, is a easement for the sewer line, a parcel B. Because parcel B couldn't, will have to flow, um, to the, uh, to the north there.
Yeah, there'll be a, uh, easement for along A and B. Because if there's ever a sale of that block four or whatever, four on block five, there would need to be more. Run sewer house go to, to First North.
And it does show it on the plan. I mean, it's recorded.
I believe it's on, on your plan, right?
It'll be on my plan. That was very specific to what I was asking. Just make sure it wasn't that. So, yeah, it's in there.
Planning is only recommended for approval. We're good to go.
Any questions?
I know that we approve it.
Okay, let's do that.
And second, though, with a caveat, we hate to lose the Nelsons in the neighborhood.
You're getting a great new, new people. They're the Nelsons. Moving in. She's a teacher with the high school, she'll be teaching that. And they're trying to get, uh, Moonlight Lodge and so on up and right.
So we have a motion by Councilman Labor and a second by Councilman Wade. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll let her start.
We're buying Clay's notice.
These are our neighbors now.
When Clay decides to get his new house built, we'll.
We'll move in.
Move again. We're in, in the farm now.
You'll have to have, um.
On my side?
Yeah. Yes.
Put it on the sign. If it actually says recorder, just.
Approved and accepted this.
Sorry, I don't know what I'm doing. Me neither. All right.
Yeah. Give the treasurer a sign.
Gotcha.
Reversed, correct.
Good luck with that higher elevation.
Yeah, actually down in, uh, we go up the edge of the hill. We're not up there like that. They're down under the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a couple, um, we'll do the appointments very quickly and then we'll go, I'm going to switch a couple of things, but let's do that. So planning and zoning, Ruth Anne just barely left. All right. Um, but there were three individuals, uh, that we had to consider, uh, for planning and zoning. Given her history, uh, her background and what she does, uh, where she lives in the city, uh, we needed some representation in that area. Um, I've decided to present her to the council for appointment, um, to, to finding zoning. And she would take, they'd take some spots and that would be two years left in that term. So. Uh, would entertain a motion to approve her in that position.
Someone in there. Second.
Motion by Councilman Wade and second by Councilman Barrett. All in favor? Any opposed? Hey, motion passes. Um, next would be the housing authority board. We have, um, two terms that came up, Bo Hancock and Ryan Snow. Uh, they've expressed willingness to continue to serve in that capacity. And I would present them to be reappointed, uh, in those positions. We have Bo Hancock, Ryan Snow to be reappointed for another three year term in the housing authority. Four, four year term. Yeah, that's the only one that's different. Um, so would entertain a motion to approve that.
Someone in there. Second.
Motion by Councilman Wade, second by Councilman White. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, before we get to the airport and runway tax wait improvements, um, there are a few people, I think, still here. For, for resolution twenty nineteen, two ninety-five, as the Arts Parks and Recreation Committee, resolution. Uh, has everybody had a chance to, can we pull that up? And has everyone had a chance to look at that?
Sorry, we're just going to, we're just going to say for what?
Oh, wait, did we swear him in?
Sometimes we do swear him in while we're here, um, but he can come back.
We'll come back tomorrow. I think I got a bigger agenda, so. When is your housing authority board meeting?
Oh, it's not for a while.
We just had one, so it will, it may just, it really.
Can we swear a minute back? Next council meeting.
We can do that. It doesn't have to be in a public, you just swear.
That works.
Right. Well, we got to walk away, so sometimes. And take care of that in, in planning and zoning, and you can also do that in the next housing authority board meeting.
Or that, before they've just gone into Carolyn's office and just.
And that.
Is it any time?
That works too.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Uh, no, arts, parks and rec. M, yeah, we're definitely to M. I'm just trying to get told of what people would be most concerned about and then we'll get to the ones that are the least entertaining. We should have cut the budget at the end. Uh, so let's put it that, has everyone had a chance to look at that resolution? Um, this is something that we've been working on for a while. Last council meeting we did, um, we present, uh, the idea of forming a committee to the council. Um, and to move forward with, with that after, um, the majority voted to, to move forward with that. We can form this, uh, committee similar to the economic development committee. There was some concerns last meeting, um, one individual was concerned with maybe feeling like it was a mandatory thing. If there was a sports programmer or a particular, uh, sport that we would mandate they would be represented in. And so we made this very open and flexible to, um, first of all, if you'll notice in section one, it can be not less than five, but up to eleven members. So we have some flexibility on how many members that would be, uh, or could be. The other thing is there's no mandate for any particular organization groups for, for anything else. This is what the council, I in the council is, would feel individuals in the community that want to participate. We would reach out to them and it wouldn't necessarily be, um, just sports or, or, you know, sports or arts or whatever, it'd be, it'd be a good mix of the group. So we kind of addressed those concerns. Um, there is a lot of, uh, public support that I've seen, um, out there for it. Um, I think it'd be a good thing. The economic development committee has been beneficial. It's, I've seen a lot of, um, good in what's come of that committee and information that passes from, from, uh, different entities. And I feel like this could be similar in organizing ourselves and, and getting our arts and parks and rec and enhancing and adding to what we have. Um, and this committee would, would start out as strictly an advisory committee. And, uh, we have listed below the duties, the powers and duties of the committee. We did make some changes. Um, instead of creating the calendar, we felt it best that it, because Roosevelt City already has a calendar that's ready to go. Uh, but they would assist in, in preparing that calendar and updating that calendar, making sure that the events were put on there. So that would be better advertised, uh, to the community. And, uh, that was, that's about the only change we made since you've seen it. And would open that up for discussion for the council.
I have one question in here.
Yeah.
Talking with one of the people on the Economic Development Committee, is there any, if they have a meeting scheduled and, and not very many people up, is there a certain number of people that have to be there before they can have their meeting?
Well, before they can take any action, like on the meeting. So there's not real, with an advisory committee, you're not, you're taking, I mean, you're not taking, the only action that you really perform that, that is needed by a quorum is to have approving minutes. Everything else where it's advisory, I mean, you're not.
That's what my question was. Is there really anything there that they can discuss or give opinions on and?
They can give opinions as long as a quorum.
It's just the minutes they can approve.
Right.
But they can still have their meeting and do that.
Oh, they can, yeah. And we've done that, that, you know, the last, I was gone, there were several people gone and, uh, because the meeting was around during break. And so there were several people gone that meeting. This last meeting, uh, there were several people that, um, had other conflicts.
Right. I just wasn't sure what exactly they needed a quorum for.
Right. And this, and that's the thing, they approve minutes and those types of things, right? So, no matter, but this one does specify if a quorum is not present, the meeting shall be held. And any items of business shall be continued to the next meeting of committee. I don't know. I mean, you could still, um, coordinate, you can still do things. You're not making, um.
They're passing suggestions on that. That's the red.
Right. And so, uh, the reason for these committees too, isn't, um, is to help one of the, it's to expose. And I've seen that benefit already in the economic development committee where it exposes them to, to, to government settings. And in a non, um, well, not, I wouldn't say competition, but in a non-intimidating way. So they can, they learn these processes and they, they learn these procedures and that. And, um, and so, anyway, it's a good way for them to learn and, I guess, for me to train and see future leaders come from these communities. So they're, they're not as stringent and it's not like we're doing, we're expending funds or anything like that. It's just, they're, they're there to assist staff and council in becoming informed about the issues and helping resolve, in my mind, and solve some of those, those things on their own. In my mind, it's a great way to come to do that. So, anyway, you had a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I think this is good because it provides a platform for the community. And those who are actually out there doing the legwork on providing events and activities for our kids and for the community to actually have input to the council as to how, how they would like us to deal with them and to provide policies that they can work with. So I think it's pretty much strictly advisory and it's mainly just to get input and, uh.
Coordination.
In coordination, yeah. So as far as I'm concerned, I really, I really like the idea of, of taking what we can from those who are working hard enough and can provide, um, events and activities.
One good thing about the way we're doing this too is we're presenting it in a resolution form and not in ordinance form. And the reason for that is we want to see where this is evolving. Um, it may eventually, and I talked to, uh, Ryan, our city manager about it. You know, it would be a good thing if we could create a district that rode, uh, an arts and parks district. And expand beyond Roosevelt City's border and incorporate people outside of that. And this would be a good start to see how, you know, how things go at this level. And, and see if they would eventually progress into that. I mean, Yona County has a district to form, um, for their arts and, their parks and recreation. Duchene County's never had one and, and I don't think they ever will unless we start to get the ball rolling with, with something. And I think this is, um, it's a small step towards that, but it's a necessary step to be able to progress and, and do some of the things that I think we'd like to see in that regard.
Maybe about that too. I appreciate the work that you guys have all put into this. I mean, I'm not who's been working on this in the background, but it's good that it's, you know, I just had a couple of questions. Working with advisory committees a lot, uh, in my profession. Probably mine are more from a couple of local standpoints that suggest that we would review language on, I know for number eight. Uh, anytime we get into a grievance arena, that ensures something that really the committee wouldn't be doing. So I would suggest that we strike something like that out of there. Um, also, I guess, maybe just sharpening some of the spots in there, whether, I like the language here, like on six and seven, it's recommend, recommend, recommend. Just defining the lines of recommendation versus what city administration staff are doing. I think we could clear that a little and let it look, that's had opportunity to, to get with our city staff and really get their vetting and buy-in. And just making sure that we're working together to understand where we're at is all.
Yeah, and I, I see what you're saying on eight especially. And that was one that we talked to the city attorney about today. And we felt like, because he, that was really, he's looked through this and, and, um, sees no legal problems or issues with it. Except he didn't understand under number eight, how that would work with an advisory committee. And so we decided, well, we could strike number eight and at least the rest intact. As far as your other comment, I feel like the recommend and most types of things, like four, uh, three, review existing policies. These are all just recommendations. And so, uh, to me, it, it's not taking the place of city staff that's just recommending. So I think the other concern is valid. I, I do however, think that if we read through the, it's all just review and recommend. And it's not really, you know, it's strictly that. So.
And I, I support that. Just, just making sure, I would, I would want our staff to look at it. So they have that opportunity. Just getting, the better the buy-in, the better it's going to work. So everyone's understanding how their role is going to play into this and how the advisory committee is going to play into this. Setting up times to, to have advisory committee come, you know, and give us the recommendations. Just like the, uh, economic development committee, you know, we want to see that back to give us recommendations on things they're working on. And I think those types of things are just things to consider and play forward as all.
I, I, I don't disagree. I think the, the economic development, it, it works independent. Uh, so it's just, I think, it's ideas, it's suggestions, it's those types of things, the coordination, the organization of the different entities. And I don't see how, well, I guess that's a good comment and we can consider that. My own personal opinion is I don't see how it's, I mean, Ryan's aware of it, very aware of it. I don't know. What, what has the staff said? Have they?
This is when we came late, so we didn't have our, um, our, our arts, or our art and rec committee meeting. So we haven't, uh, put it out in that committee because we, we've had it. Um, we have looked at it and there are some things that, um, you know, we're, we're excited. I mean, we, we're not everywhere, so to have a group who can help feed us activities, you know, that's great. And we don't, we, we try to reach out. We, we have the, the network we have, they get that. But to have more people go forward as information, can add in council, but you have the, the calendar and those kind of things. Things that can increase the number of, uh, activities that are being held. Um, you know, I think, I think promoting volunteerism, I don't know how much staff is involved. Staff would be only involved when, when policy is, is related. Um, removing, removing policy items because we recommend policies and, and that. Um, other than, outside of the policy side, I don't see that it really affects the staff much. Other than the sportsmanship, which then that conflicts with someone's say, but policy and beyond there, I don't know that it's going to have much staff interaction, other than, you know, maybe to attend, that's a choice of matter. Um, attend, understand, take those things back and coordinate. Uh, it's just going to operate independently from, from staff like they can approach.
That's, that's kind of what I felt as well. Yeah. So I was just gonna say, I, you know, the way I see it, um I can understand some way that's, is saying, but I see this as a non-invasive period, but we think you guys should do, and then the council is to make a decision based on this recommendation from the staff and recommendation from the committee. So I, I think it could work. I don't think it trumps the staff or either, or it's just another source of information, that's why I feel like it worked independently, it's not telling the staff. It's not pumping what the staff's doing or saying, it's just another avenue of information to consider as we're making decisions.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I, I guess I'm just recommending the giving them that bit of time to go through and look at it, if we need to take policy language out, let's take policy language out. The recommendations are gonna be independent, I appreciate more people being involved, you just don't want to imply something that gives someone the thought that they should be doing something that's not the area they should be in, that's all. You just want to imply something that's not, not there. That's, that's all I'm suggesting, I'm not, I'm not advocating, I'm just, I'm just giving you observations from advisor committees, that's it.
I think, I think policies are definitely areas that we want feedback from the people who those policies affect.
Any other thoughts or comments? I think it's fair to say that number eight um could probably be stricken at this time.
And look, just, just for, at Aaron's point, we do, we do have the parks and um for the parks and rec meeting, we do have two councilmen that sit on that. And uh as, as a staff one, um if they wanted to go there and you wanted to have it, that would be something we could definitely um visit and the council could have and have an opportunity as well as staff if you had that desire. But I think i- if it's independent and that's what the vision is, then that's what we're trying to figure out from the, the staff side is what what it looks like, but we won't know until it starts to form and and grow and see where, see where it progresses, so.
Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment, and I don't think it'd hurt for this to go another month, just to review and get the staff and the parks, right, I'm on that committee. Missed most meetings last month, I think, and I think that would be beneficial. It's not over thirty days. I still have, some people have been concerned that that recreation and cultural things together, but you know, that, yeah.
So I've done a lot of things, because I can help come up with some of the ideas for this, and um I feel like arts and parks and recreation should all be on the same committee, and because the thing is those people are gonna use the same facilities, they're gonna be working to provide opportunities for the community and a lot of times um they have to correlate because they're gonna be using there's, basically, it's, the only difference is one's a sport and one's an activity for a big crowd. And both of them draw on large amounts of people, and they're using similar facilities. And I think the policies are gonna affect both groups, I think they should all have a say in that.
And I totally agree, I came into it not agreeing with that, but I, I do agree with that, I just know that I had some comment still about that, so I think a little bit more time and making sure that we, especially have the staff and everybody on top of it and agree, wouldn't hurt, so that, that's my comment.
I, I tend to agree with that. I think I'd like to see somebody do it a little bit more. And I also don't like number eight, so I think it's, it's the mayor on strike for number eight.
Well, so um kind of table, if like we did the other one. Well, thank you, a couple of comments I'd like to make and, and then we can move forward. Uh, first and foremost, uh that is um with the coordination. First of all, I know there, there was not very many people concerned about that, that I noticed um about the, the two coming together. And I agree with Councilman Baird, the reason it is a, a group that would consider arts, parks and rec is because when we're planning events and we have sports involved and we have other activities involved and all those things, we want all of those groups to the table uh to be able to talk about and coordinate those efforts to make sure that those go off without a hitch, so. The other idea behind this is we have several compartmentalized things that we're doing in the city. And this would be a way to start to, to bring all of those together. Uh, heaven forbid we lose certain people, key people in some of those compartmentalized areas. And I think we would be in pretty poor position, so this would be a way to uh bring some stability to what we're doing and some uh more people involved with what's going on. I tend to disagree uh that we need to wait. To me, it's, it's very, I don't know how much more basic we can get on a resolution and non-intrusive and still get it to pass, so my feeling is, is if it doesn't pass like this, I really don't see much more than we can strip from that resolution and still have anything for anyone to do, so. That's my own personal opinion. But I, I don't understand why we have, there's so much hesitation and concern surrounding this when to me, it's a very simple and appropriate thing to do in a community. Um, and several communities um have something like this and are much more detailed than this, and it works fantastically. So that's the comments that I'll
Can I, can I make one more comment? I mean, this is an independent committee, the only way it does impact the staff or Roosevelt is if the administrators of the city make a decision based on input from the community and the staff. So I don't see how this is invasive in any way to the staff, and I, I mean, if these guys were reporting to the staff, I could see them saying, yeah, we should totally make sure that they're doing this, that and the other thing, but we are the council, we're the ones who make the decisions on on these things, and I think this is great for these people to report to the council so that we can make educated and informed decisions regarding what we can do for those who are providing opportunities to our community.
I, I totally agree, and I agree, Mayor, you're very forward-thinking and some, and a lot more than a lot in the community, and you do things quicker. I just think the ownership that the staff would have and say, hey, we, they cared enough for us to read it too. That would make, go a long ways on that side.
Yeah.
And that's why I really, I think the combination is wonderful, and I didn't think that at first. I mean, if people can sit down, get calendars together, and we can combine some events and avoid conflict with others, all those things will be great, but I think that staff that I, when I'm at that meeting is a great group and this, and I just think it touches them. It's all parks and recreation, it isn't a culture park, but they would be by the park, whatever it is.
Well, that's, that's how I feel too, it's, it's not to minimize it, it's to give that buy-in. I mean, we talk all the time about getting input, getting buy-in. Why wouldn't we, when you get that buy-in?
And I believe that, any hesitation from the staff? I mean, because, and the reason I say this is, this has been a topic of discussion for almost a year and a half now. And so you've probably heard by now, and I, I don't disagree, if we wait another month to get the buy-in, that's fine, I'm just wondering.
I think it's just an industry, I mean, if it's anything to staff, we're worried, we're worried of what we're doing, you know. I mean, and, and that's really, that's really what I say, is there some, some potential worry? Yeah, because we don't, we don't know all of it, and, and for their point, they haven't um, you know, looked at it, we got it um the final version, even this one came um modified today. Uh, they, they would be concerned with, with what they're unknown, but I think if it's not going to to be affecting staff, and it's not, it's an independent one, I don't think there will be as many concerned that way. Um, I would bring up the, the proposal, um we have one, we have that meeting, we have two councilmen assigned there. We have a process that goes there and, and to review it would be a good thing, I think it's positive to give them, to give them buy-in. And, and I like to have that, I, I, I meet with all departments regularly, we try to be able to have a group um idea and buy-in and, and I think that's, that's true, we talk about everything that's going on in the city that way. Um, when we, when we met, we didn't have a
I agree with the buy-in, I really do, I'm not trying to say we don't.
No, you do.
I'm just saying that the staff has, has had a year and a half, but I mean, this is, we presented some basic forms of this for a long time, and I don't know if the cap, if the staff were to come back and say, we really don't want this. In my opinion, this is something that is needed in our community, and I know there is some hesitation by staff because they may feel some things about it, and we'll see how that goes, and I'm willing to, to see how that goes.
I hope you don't think this is a reflection upon all your hard work, because I
Oh, no, not at all.
I understand that, I have it. And hey, we're not asking to give approval, just to read and comment, uh, because they have no approval.
And I think that's a great, if we can get them to look at, tell us what we can improve on it, and, you know, we, we may, you know, approve, I like the idea of having them buy-in, because then they, what they own it is what on there on board with it and they don't have any
They, they may have some suggestions of what they'd like to see, I don't know that. Maybe, maybe you get some suggestions for it and say, hey, maybe, maybe add this, or you know, we really could use the public to help us with this, or, I, I'm not sure.
So I think the worry is that they would say we don't want it and that the council would vote against it. Because I feel like this is something that the citizens of Roosevelt in general as a whole um would be for, and so to listen to the city over the citizens is not my job, my job's to listen to citizens and provide feedback to the, to the city and write, you know, policy novels based on that, so. I think it's good to bring to them, to hear their input, but I think that ultimately, whether they like it or not, this is something that I'd like to see happen. And, and that's mainly based on the fact that my suspicions is not be necessarily the employees, that's a very small
I, I, I would comment a little better. Employees work for you, and that, we're not, we're on a different side or whatever, we we're, we're citizens. We're, we're working for it. We all ultimately are responsible to residents, what the residents want, so do we, we, we're, we're there, remember? Whatever the majority of the council says, we're on board, we're gonna be there.
And I, I think this is a perfect avenue to, to hear what the residents want in a more organized fashion.
Sure.
And versus coming to city council and having a complaint or, or this or that or the other. That is the entity where they would go, voice their concern, it could be worked out on that level before it came to city council. And so I'm, and I don't get a vote, but I'm willing to entertain, or, you know, we wait for, and I do feel exactly like uh Baird in the sense that I know how many people in our community would like this, and I hate to see this not pass because there's some staff that are afraid of the unknown, we don't know, but this has been done throughout the state and the nation and it works.
I think we have that word of trust. I'm not fearful of being swayed by them saying they don't want it. I'm wanting them to know that we respect them enough to show this to them and let them call you. And that's all that I'm asking, because I so, I'm one hundred percent behind you, but I think this one step in only thirty days is not gonna be life or death, so.
I agree with that. And I hope I didn't come across wrong, I do appreciate the staff and employees, and I will, I will listen to anything they have to say. And I appreciate what they do, so if I came across a bad thing, I'm sorry.
What, what are your words saying?
And Councilman Labor, that's a good point, and I do agree with that, because, you know, it's, it's only fair.
Well, and you've worked a lot, you've done a lot more on it, I've been there too and maybe have to review. And so I really feel that strongly, you know.
So, you know, it's remembering, we've already pushed this forward. I mean, as, as a council, council spoke and we're forming a committee. It's the, the committee, this is just simply that very thing, I'm not, not interested in saying, no, let's not do it. We've already spoke that way, we're, we're already moving forward that way, it's just that simple point. It just gives that buy-in, build-in, understanding, you just can't, that's such a dividend you can't violate. And thirty days is a great payment for that.
I agree.
I would second the motion to table for a bring back.
Just one item, so those are, that are on the committee, um as a reminder, that is the seventeenth of June, that is the day of the meeting, we've sent out a, a
Just send like
reminder, what I just, reminded you, hand calendars or that, that's when that next meeting is held. And that'd be a great time for us to review it, we, we all meet together, um so if that's what the council system is.
The seventeenth?
The seventeenth.
So around the eight o'clock?
And then, and then the council meeting comes on the nineteenth, we'll come back with feedback.
Oh, okay, perfect, I see what you're saying.
The next council meeting, we would, we would meet on that and have it come up.
Fair enough, I feel like I skipped it off the line. And it's a little bit, I do feel like
And you'll come back with some good recommendations that you, you might really like.
I hope there is.
If you've already decided you have any committee, that's not a choice. It's what we think, you, you might want, want from a professional standpoint that does it all the time, you may want to to know what you might want to add and help.
These are two, yeah, I like that. I'm not against it, I just
We work hard. It's gotta be as good as you can and encourage it, it's all a pro, a pro.
Perfect, so we have a motion to set at the table and give time for the staff to review, and then it'll come up in our next meeting on the seventeenth of June. We have a second.
No, the seventeenth of June is the A bar.
Correct. On favor.
All right.
Thank you both. Got that, got that. Okay. I thought Do you need?
Yeah, that's why I think here, I thought they might come.
Well, I we don't have it, I don't have it, no, but we should probably, right, Councilman Labor, I should have
Well, no, I thought they would just
We're, we're jumping to the notice of order for runway and taxiway improvements, so let me
Yes. So a few things, just before we get there, there is some by the way, um so this is gonna be a long meeting and she brought you a treat. So um there are homemade brownies, they were made today fresh, um so if you want, Joey, you can take one, pass it around, or if you don't want one. Um, I'm not sure she'll be offended, but uh she's an excellent cook, and we took that on the record, make sure that's in the mix. And uh there is some cookies here that have been brought in and hopefully everyone's served cookies as well. So it can be fast, it'll last. Before we get into the really exciting stuff, other than the second most exciting stuff of the night, um in agenda being, the, the first meeting of the first so about
Because they're not staring at you.
No, I have one, but this is my way of limiting myself. As we, as we go there, we will talk, um one thing I would correct record, we uh we spoke for just a couple of months, it would take just a um airport, it will take more to the taxiway and I just spoke to it, it will take us a bit more time because we're building taxiways. I, I, in my excitement, I think
It cuts only five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll be more than that on the taxway, so. You know what? Would now be
Two minute break, everybody kind of
Let's just take a two minute break.
I need to drink.
I better not, thank you.
Oh, yes, I love those. I'm gonna end the end the livestream? Is it gonna start again?